Everybody ready?
But for every teacher who says, "We love it," I would say, "We're not using it much."
I'm now calling this meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 21st to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call? Madam Business Administrator?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Bogacheski?
Here.
Ms. Centafonte? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Dr. Swasan?
Here.
Ms. Trujillo?
Here.
And Ms. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving right along. We have the approval of minutes. We had an executive session held on June 11th. May I have a motion and second for the approval of executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or otherwise? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Very good. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 11th. A motion and second, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the regular minutes? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Got that done. Okay, we had some correspondence. And one of the letters of correspondence was a question about class sizes. I just want to reiterate what the superintendent said at our last meeting, that we will be looking at enrollment as of August 1st, so people shouldn't be concerned unduly at this time of the year yet. We'll see what the enrollments are, and we'll make class size decisions based on our standard numbers, which are 22 up through first grade, and then 25 in a class after that. So that was one of the letters that was concerned. Again, August 1st, we'll let everybody know. Board President's Report. I had a very nice two weeks. On June 14th, there was a wonderful program at Hillsborough Elementary School for Flag Day, and it was wonderful. There were veterans there, there were student performers of the young kind, as well as our high school choir, and it was really a beautiful program. I'd just like to thank Principal Susan Eckstein and our wonderful Mrs. Hopkin, uh, Hopson, who put the program together. It was really very moving for all who attended. And then we had graduation on June 19th, and we had the pleasure and privilege of graduating, what was it, 579 students? And one especially special one to our Vice President, Mademoiselle Elena, Eleanor, graduated, along with all the other kids in our district. And that was wonderful. And I personally had my Somerset County Educational Services Commission graduation last Thursday, which is very different from ours, but very moving in that every student who graduates gets up and talks about people who are meaningful in their lives, and it's like a major, you know, multiple tissue box event for me. And I just want to acknowledge those graduates as well, because they've gone through a lot to get where they are, and I'm very proud of them. Okay, I'll hand over to our Acting Superintendent, our usual Business Administrator, I'm in my mood, for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Haas. Was a little jittery when Ashley was doing the roll call. I was actually doing it with her, so I have to get used to doing this for a little bit. I am filling in for Dr. Schiff this evening. And I want to share some wonderful news all around the district with our board members and for those who are in attendance tonight. On Tuesday, as Mrs. Haas, June 19th, in front of about 6,000 parents, family members, friends, teachers, administrators, staff members, and board members, members of the Hillsborough High School class of 2018 were presented with their diplomas. The amazing class of 579 graduates is moving on to the next steps in their lives, and we couldn't be more proud. In total, the class of 2018 earned $6.88 million in total scholarship awards.
Wow.
That's a huge amount of money.
Yeah, it is.
These classmates are all off to 160 unique schools to further their education, with about 50% remaining in New Jersey and the other 50% leaving the state. 73.95 of these students will be attending a four-year school. 18% will be attending a two-year school. 1.22% will be attending a technical school or doing an apprenticeship. 1.75 will be serving in one of our military branches. And 3.15 will be directly joining our workforce, taking a gap year and have other plans. I really want to say our sincere congratulations to the Hillsborough High School class of 2018. We wish you much success. I'm also pleased to share that we had two local third-grade students from Triangle Elementary School who'll be participating in this year's National Youth Leadership Forum, which is a Pathways to STEM program. Isabella Rue and Arun Bush will join other students from across the country who have a passion for science, math, and add an annual leadership forum this summer in Trenton. Both Isabella and Arun were nominated for this opportunity by their teacher, Ms. Doreen Mattingly. The six-day summer forum will consist of a hands-on STEM simulations and workshop. The Pathways to STEM initiative was created to serve as a unique learning experience for bright, forward-thinking elementary school students who evolve into the next generation of innovators, engineers, doctors, school business administrators, now, software developers, and scientists. I want to congratulate Isabella and Arun. I don't know if I'm as funny as Dr. Schiff, though. On June 18, 2018, the Hillsborough High School's own Jim McFaulin Jr. was nominated the High School Strength and Conditioning Coach of the Year for 2018 by the National Strength and Conditioning Association. The acronym is the NSCA. Coach McFaulin becomes the 27th recipient of this award, which has been handed out by this organization since 1991. Award winners are selected by a volunteer committee, the NSCA's Coaching Task Force, who determine the winner based on their contributions to the NSCA, their community, and their strength and conditioning professionalism. Since 1997, Jim has been in charge of the implementation of the Hillsborough High School's Raider Strength and Conditioning Co-Curriculum Program. In 1999, he began a Strength and Conditioning Co-Curriculum Initiative for students at the intermediate school and middle school level, both programs one year round. Congratulations, Jim, and thank you for all the hard work you do for our student athletes of all ages. I'd also like to congratulate our very own President, President Mrs. Haas, for once again being elected as the President of the Somerset County Educational Services Commission. I know that's not an easy task, and it's not an easy post to be elected to. I believe, Mrs. Haas, there's several years you've been the President.
Like, six.
Six years. So I want to congratulate Mrs. Haas for being the President of the ESC.
Thank you. Smart choice.
The last part of my Superintendent's Report consists of a couple of reports that we'll have Mr. Volpe go over with you. Prior to me doing that, I do want to take a few seconds to wish everyone a great summer break. I would ask that everybody be safe, enjoy your time off, and before you know it, we'll be back here in September. So with that in mind, Mr. Volpe, if you're ready to do, I think there are two mandated presentations. Mr. Volpe was scheduled to do a two-hour presentation. I've narrowed it to an hour and a half.
I consider them more reports than presentations.
Got it.
Just wanted to say that.
An hour and a half is enough?
I believe so. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You guys may remember, board members, as the Anti-Bullying Coordinator for the District, there are certain reports that I have to report out to you a couple of times a year. The first one I'm going to report out to you is item 8.1. And during these two quick reports, believe it or not, I'm going to talk to you about three school years, 2016-17, 2017-18, and 2018-19. For the Student Safety Data System Report, this report is new. We are asked to report additional information to you besides just the harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And you can see the numbers that are reported there. In addition, the new information that I have to report is about all incidents, and the state requires that we cluster them together. The incidents include any violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, or confirmed HIBs. So your confirmed HIBs are now classified with all of those incidents. Now, you may remember that in the second half of the year, I have to report out about the first half of the year. So what you're looking at here is all of our information from September through the end of the calendar year in December. So a quick analysis of that, if you look at all the schools with the exception of the high school, we had zero confirmed HIBs the first half of the year. When I speak to Dr. Schiff, if the board likes further information, we can talk to if there's any, for any reasons of confidentiality in that first column. If the board would like to see that broken down, to see which ones are the HIBs, which ones are potential substances, we can look at doing that. But right now, I am showing you what I'm required to by the state. So this is our report for the first half of the year. And when we come back in the fall, I will be giving you the same report about the second half of the year from January through June. So that's item 8.1. Yes, Dr. Swasan?
I'll answer to any of those. Can I just ask what incidents might be contained in that second column, other incidents leading to removal?
Yeah, those could be any kind of suspensions. I think it's probably misleading the way that it is put there. I would, rather than speculate here, I can get back to you and confirm, students may be suspended for other reasons. There could be issues depending on our attendance policy, and I'm saying this off the top of my head, so please, I don't know this, but I know when I was a Vice Principal of a high school in different areas, there are other reasons that you could be suspended for incidents of insubordination, and this is off the top of my head right now. But if the board is interested in finding out what those other instances are, I can certainly do that.
I wasn't looking for specificity.
Okay.
What I was looking for is sort of an explanation for the public as to what
Sure.
what might those other things be? So, attendance-related things?
Absolutely.
So, anything that required suspension that was not included in column one?
That is correct.
Substances, weapons, HIBs.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, there are reasons outside of violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, or confirmed HIBs that someone might be removed from school, any other disciplinary infraction that's not included in that first column that would lead to a suspension would be something.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look at item 8.2, item 8.2 is the school report, the self-assessment report card that all the anti-bullying specialists work on throughout the course of the year. And then at the end of the year, I'm sorry, at the end of the year, they report a score to me. Going into the next school year, so this past October, we then finalize it and report it to the state. The state embargoes that data. And, Mr. Mahmood, there's a second attachment that actually makes it a little bit more clearly if the board members want to see. Scroll to the other way. Keep going. See that second one?
Yes.
It might be a little bit easier.
Got it.
So, at the end of the school year, anti-bullying specialists assess their school. That is turned into me in the fall, where it is reviewed. It is then reported into the state, and the state reviews it over a couple-month period. In the spring of the following year, the state releases that information and says, "Yes, it looks like you have assessed yourselves accurately." And then we are required to sometime before the end of the school year, so it is now June 25th, so we're getting this in right here, is that we report out the 2016-2017 self-assessments for anti-bullying efforts in the district. All of our scores are within the same range that we have reported out previous years. There's no statistical significance and changes. And what I can tell you with the anti-bullying specialists working on their information for this year, for 1718, the scores are getting a little bit closer. As you can see, there's a five-point gap between some schools, and a lot of that has to do with how we train everyone involving harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It goes without saying that all of our hired staff members are adequately and vigorously trained in harassment, intimidation, and bullying. What some schools noticed last year, again in 2016-17, volunteers, vendors, some schools do things better than others in order to get that information out, whether it's through HSAs or through their handbooks. So we're making a concerted effort to make sure that everyone involved who comes into our schools gets some kind of training. So again, what you're looking at here are the scores from 2016-17, and we're already finishing the 2017-18 ones, which will be reported out to you next spring. Yes, Dr. Swasan?
Just again, for the public, these scores are out of a possible total of 78, correct?
That is correct, yes. Out of a possible total of 78, completely, yes. And we're not perfect. We're always striving for perfection, but we will try to get every point we have. And the thing that I like about this report, too, just for the public, these are self-assessments. So if the anti-bullying specialists, I felt, weren't taking this seriously and really being reflective and looking to improve our efforts, we could put down 78s for everybody. But what we're really trying to do is take a look at what we're doing and where we can improve and move forward from there. And see you in the fall.
Are there any more questions?
I'll be here next week. I'm sorry, any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. Madam President, that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, we can move on to Committee Reports at this point. We had a meeting of the Operations Committee, and Brett Cooper will be giving that report.
I'm moving up. Okay, the Operations Committee met on June 13th, and we discussed a number of things. One of the things, we had a presentation by Kathy Major of SEDEXO. We discussed the increase in the fees for lunches. There's a slight increase. We didn't go all the way up to the state averages, I guess it is. We did increase it slightly just to maintain that we're in the right range. She also presented different options about things that we could add to the high school dining hall, and we're discussing that, and there may be additions in the fall, but we still needed more research on that. We discussed the cap reserve, setting a limit on what to add to the cap reserve. That number, again, is not set yet. We hope to have a deposit, I think. When do we know that?
We'll probably know within the next three weeks or so.
Okay, three weeks or so, but we had to set a number that it can't go over, so we're setting that today with the approval. We accepted a donation for stage lighting at the middle school to replace what they had, I guess, higher-definition ones that's being presented by the HSA donation there. We're replacing the floor in Amsterdam, getting rid of that rubberized floor, putting in a real gym floor. Oh, we discussed the repair and replacement of the high school track. Right now, it's not in the budget to replace the whole thing, so we will continue to make repairs and discuss it as part of our long-range plan that we're going to be discussing over the next couple of weeks. And we also discussed the new policy on our bus drivers, setting the limit of the number of points they're allowed to have in order to drive for the district at a more stringent level than the state level. We're reviewing that policy with our attorneys, and we're going to hopefully have it on for first reading. I don't believe today.
It won't be.
It will be in the future, but we are looking at that. We're going to, oh, we're going to, Dr. Schiff is moving forward with mapping our schools in case of emergency response. Don't know what rooms correlate to what rooms. All of Somerset County is moving forward with this, so we approved that, and we're putting in carbon monoxide detectors in all our schools as per required by, I believe it's the state. Yes. And that was about it?
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciated. Brett and Chris Pulsofer will be doing the HR report.
Thank you. The HR Committee met on June 11th. The first item we discussed was, Mr. Volpe presented an opportunity to both save some money and give some of our students an opportunity for work over the summer. As part of the process of rolling over the Chromebooks and preparing them for the next year, in the past, we'd contract out to, I believe it's CDW as a vendor, and that was actually what's in the budget. Mr. Volpe presented a suggestion from Mr. Handler about the opportunity to create positions for three students to do that work for us. It will save us money and also give those students a chance to have some experience working with technology and treat it sort of as like a student internship. After reviewing that presentation, the Committee announced we recommended that we approve that model. We also had a staffing update. Up to that time, we had hired 29 certificated staff members and three support staff members for the coming school year. Of the remaining 15 vacancies, 12 are certificated staff and three support staff, and the math doesn't work. So our minutes reflect that there are 15 vacancies, 12 are certificated staff, three are support staff, and nine are for athletics. In my book, that's 24, not 15. We'll get some clarification.
Full-time vacancies?
Oh, full-time vacancies, okay.
Yes, as opposed to athletic stipends.
Okay. But somebody's here to keep me straight.
Hey, I'm trying.
So, anyway, so we're in good shape for those remaining positions. We have candidates, and they're very far into the process. We also discussed compensation for administration, which I believe is on tonight's agenda, if I remember correctly, and also the procedures for evaluation, the Superintendent and the board's self-evaluation. And that was our meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd just like to remind all of my wonderful board members that the evaluations that were just mentioned are due, hopefully, by the end of this week, so we can have it in on time for not getting slammed on CUSAC. So if you have a chance, please, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along.
Questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll ask a question, Brett or anybody who's at the meeting. What is the number of points going to be in our policy for bus drivers? Do you know? Not that I don't want to be a forgiving type, but...
It was, so it's 11 that the state allows?
That's currently 11.
We are going to restrict it to four? So the state...
Are we talking about the same points that I would have thought about for my license?
Yes. The state currently...
That's insane.
Allows you to be, go to 11 and be on probation. We want to set a policy that's more stringent than anyone, where you go to four and you have to go to some kind of class or something to bring it down below in order to...
Right.
At four, you're put on probation.
Yes.
And then, if you get any more points, then you're kicked out or you're removed or whatever.
We would seek that termination.
Rather than have it at 11.
Right. Well, 11 is just an absolutely ludicrous number.
That's what the state mandates.
The fact they come from the state makes it less surprising.
Yes.
I guess, and my concern is just that I'm not sure I want any of our drivers to have any, I mean, I guess two, I mean, you could have a random weird kind of thing, but I mean, by the time you get to four points, you've done something. I mean, it was a short while ago, I happened to witness an accident where one of our bus drivers struck a car going through a red light. There were no students on the bus. But there was discussion at that time, you know, this is the safety of our kids. We shouldn't tolerate barely anything. I guess, again, there are probably some things that really aren't that bad that could get you two points, but I just don't like the idea of being that tolerant of people who don't drive safely when these are the people we entrust with our students.
I think you gotta, unfortunately, that's probably the best policy, but realistically, it's probably, I think this is a huge step to go from 11 to four, being as we would be the only one in the state doing it, probably. To go to zero...
I'm not suggesting zero. I just, I think we need to think long and hard about what it is we will accept.
And I think, I think they reported that, like, 90% of the, a vast majority of the drivers have zero points.
Right.
And this is not even going to affect anything, but there are the few that, if they have four points, chances are they're going to keep going, so that's what we're trying to prevent and try to limit, at least our bus drivers, to the ones that have zero. And part of that policy, which I didn't report, which now I'm remembering, is currently they have to report, they have to check their abstracts once a year.
Absolutely.
We're initiating that they have to do it twice a year, which, again, because a lot could happen between September and the next September when it gets checked again.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that, I mean, it's important that we keep our kids safe, but also it sends a message to the bus companies that we are very seriously concerned about this, as opposed to 11, which leaves the barn door wide open.
And that's what we hope to do and say, "Listen, if they're fine with it, send those bus drivers elsewhere. We want the ones that have zero."
Yeah.
Or less.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, you're absolutely right, Mr. Pulsofer. I think that safety is the number-one priority for us, and the idea that we're bringing it from 11 to four certainly is not the answer, but it's moving in the right direction. Looking at the abstracts twice a year, if there are violations, whether it's a contracted vendor or our own, if the abstract has something that we have a concern about, we're going to have to deal with that. And when I say "deal with it," we're going to pull the driver off. The one thing that we are going to do is up the ante with the contractors and the drivers. We have felt over the last few years that the contractors, and I know there's a bus driver shortage, but that's not going to come at the cost to the safety of our kids.
Right.
So if they have to recruit and they have to work harder, that's on the contractor to get the best drivers. But we're not going to sacrifice that with safety of our kids being, you know, the number-one priority for us.
Right.
What are the consequences for a company that hires drivers with 11 points?
If they're allowed to meet the law, I mean, they, you know, they have that leniency. We can build into our, you know, our RFP or our proposals out there to be a little more stringent, but there are bus contracts out there that do employ drivers that have serious violations. And we've seen that, unfortunately, on the news over the last couple of weeks. Hillsborough is going to take a very different approach.
And we get an abstract?
We get it twice a year. We're going to be getting, and we look at the actual violations, and as I mentioned to Mr. Pulsofer, we'll be looking at that twice a year. If there is a concern over one driver or a series of drivers, we're going to address it.
This may be a question as much for our lawyer as for you, I mean, is there any reason we would not be allowed to put that into our contract with our bus vendors, being, going that far? Or is it just a matter of whether or not they're willing to negotiate with us on it?
You're allowed to do it. It's not an illegal restriction. The bus drivers are able to drive with 11, up to 11 points, because 12 points is when you get suspended.
Right.
But you can have a greater, more stringent requirement. It may affect costs. That may be an issue. It may affect costs. I don't know if you'll see a premium in terms of the vendors that bid on the routes, but it is what it is.
I'd rather see bus companies set the mark themselves and say, "We don't want to hire people like that."
That would be nice.
Tough times or not, I mean, it's, we can be first.
Although sadly, I can tell you from personal experience, you can get six points pretty quickly.
Sorry to hear.
Many years ago, 1991.
Yeah, I've watched my sons, so I know it can happen. But still, my sons don't drive a school bus.
That's right.
And I think that's paramount to us, is that people who drive that way shouldn't be driving school buses.
I totally agree.
But it's also like there are consequences for individuals who rack up points on their license. Their insurance goes through the roof. I would imagine for the bus drivers, it's not their insurance. So there's not that kind of natural consequence, right?
There's...
These points are not related to their bus driving, though, right?
Same points.
This is just anywhere, anywhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Nightmare.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other board questions about Committee Reports?
Yes. I'll just make a comment to add to what Brett said about operations, which was a good summary, is that the contractor who had come in to assess whether or not we could do a surface replacement of the track said that that was not possible, but that it was safe, and that we could continue to use it with just mending it. So I think it's important that everybody realize that it is safe to use. So we actually got something out of this, that it was verified as safe, and that they thought it would be useful for at least another year with some strategic spot...
Repairs.
Repairs.
Okay, very good. Okay, with that, I'll go to comments from the public. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. At the end of the meeting, there's another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Acting Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, public comment? One, two, three, seeing none. All righty, I guess we move on to the education agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the education agenda as follows. Item 11.1, the motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. Item 11.2, the motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying HIB determination for the attached cases. Item 11.3, the motion to approve the summer credit recovery program. Item 11.4, the motion to approve curriculum writing. Item 11.5, the motion to approve the submission of the 2019 IDEA grant application. Item 11.7, the motion to approve the submission of the FY19 ESEA grant application. Item 11.7, the motion to approve the submission of the Harbor Freight Tools for School Grant application. Item 11.8, the motion to approve the K-12 NJ SS Summer Institute participants. Item 11.9, the motion to approve ELL Southern Enrichment staff. And item 11.10, the motion to approve participants of the Social Studies Best Practice Institute.
Okay, well done. Okay, I'll take a motion and a second for the education agenda, items 11.1 through 11.10.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions about any of the items in the education agenda? Seeing none.
Roll, wait, roll call.
Ms. Bogacheski? Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. The superintendent would recommend the board approve the human resources agenda as follows. Items 12.1, the motion to approve resolution. Item 12.2, the motion to approve retirements and resignations. Item 12.3, the motion to approve transfer change in assignments for 2018-19. Item 12.4, the motion to approve contract changes for 2018-19. Item 12.5, the motion to approve leaves of absences for 2018-19. Item 12.6, the motion to approve reappointments for 2018-19. Item 12.7, the motion to approve appointments for 2018-19. Item 12.8, the motion to approve student teachers for 2018-19. Item 12.9, the motion to approve credit recovery program for 2018. Item 12.10, the motion to approve extra coverage for 2017-18. Item 12.11, the motion to approve six-period coverage for 2018-19. Item 12.12, the motion to approve the extra science lab coverage for 2018-19. Item 12.13, the motion to approve the summer enrichment program for 2018. Item 12.14, the motion to approve summer work for 2018. Item 12.15, the motion to approve staff for the 2018 summer athletic camps. Item 12.16, the motion to approve the summer technology interns for 2018. Item 12.17, the motion to approve the extended school year program staff for 2018. Item 12.18, the motion to approve the renewal of tenured HPSA 2018-19. Item 12.19, the motion to approve the renewal of the Business Administrator Board Secretary for 2018-19. Item 12.20, the motion to approve the renewal of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction for 2018-19. Item 12.21, the motion to authorize the superintendent to affirm appointments of non-administrative personnel. And finally, operations 12, item 12.22, the motion to approve group changes for 2018-19.
I'll take a motion and a second for items 12.1 through 12.22.
Madam President, I would like to ask that 12.18 be voted on separately, please.
Okay. Okay, so then I will take a motion and second for everything but item 12.18. So that will be 12.1 through 12.17, and then 12.19 through 22.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about those items? Okay, roll call, please.
Sure, Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now I'll take a motion and second on item 12.18.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about that? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Upstee.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The superintendent, thank you, recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows. Item 13.1, the motion to approve our monthly bills. Item 13.2, the motion to accept our monthly financial report. Item 13.3, the motion to approve the 2017-18 line item transfers. Item 13.4, the motion to deposit into cap reserve fund. Item 13.5, the 2018-2019 cafeteria lunch prices. Item 13.6, the motion to accept donation, and this donation is from the Home and School Association from the middle school, and that is for $18,000, as Mr. Cooper mentioned earlier, for the use of the stage lighting project. Item 13.7, the motion to approve the change in added district placement. Item 13.8, the motion to approve the change in added district placement. Item 13.9, which is the motion to approve bylaw for a second reading. And that's it, Madam President.
Okay, I'll take a motion and a second for the operations agenda, items 13.1 through 13.9, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions or comments about any of these items? Yes.
I just want to make a comment about the HSA donation. About three years ago when I was on the board, three or four, actually, maybe five now, the HSA made a similar donation for the sound system. So thanks to the work of the parents of the middle school HSA, we now have fully equipped, fully operational, should I say, and modernized sound system and lighting system after this work. So I wanted to express special thanks to the work that they did for this.
And yes, I don't think it could be said enough, thanks to HMS's HSA for this particular donation. That represents a lot of gift wrap and cookies and whatever else people sell these days. But, you know, all of our HSAs, you know, raise a lot of money that supports all of our schools, and we thank them profusely for it. It really does help. And I'd just like to also bring to the board's attention the bylaw that we're approving tonight on second reading is the one in relation to placing the budget as a particular item for the Governance Committee to address on an overall basis in the next budget process. So that sums up everything. So, did I get a, I don't think I did.
We did.
I got the motions? Okay, are there any other questions or comments? We're good.
Ms. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
Ms. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. So with that, we had a couple of informational items, and we move on to comments from the board and public about any item. So if there are any comments from the board or comments from the public at this time on any matter whatsoever, yes.
I also wanted to thank the Project Graduation team for the wonderful event that they put on for our seniors. After graduation, my daughter participated and said it was, again, another very well-done and enjoyable evening of good, clean fun. So I appreciate all the work that they did. I wanted to mention that and say thank you.
Glad you did. Thank you very much. Project Graduation is very important to our district and has been for many years, and the people who run it are miracle workers in that they raise an awful lot of money in a very short period of time, and annually, and then they simply have 500 kids to take care of on a night where everybody's very exuberant about having been graduating. So it's just a wonderful program.